Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Please stand for the President of the District.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Honorable City Council Members, Mayor, City Treasurer, Deputy Clerk, our City Attorney, Chief of Staff, Administrative Staff, those who are in the audience this evening and those viewing tonight's meeting via our broadcast channel on YouTube Live. Welcome to the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting and today's date is Monday, December 4th, 2023. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so under the Public Comment portion of the agenda. Please fill out a Request to Speak Public Comment card located on the table in the back of the chambers and hand it to the Deputy Clerk. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barden.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wiesworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
So noted.
And Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum. Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Three, petitioner. Four, Chairperson's report. Five, Mayor's report. Six, Clerk's report. Seven, Treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, communication. And number twelve, adjournment. And motion being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo. For approval on the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number two, minutes. For approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, November 27th, 2023 at 7:30 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move on that we approve the council minutes from the regular meeting held on November 27th.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wiesworth, supported by Ms. Tally. For approval of the minutes from the council meeting on Monday, the 27th at 7:30 p.m. Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Stand.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There were no special meetings held on Monday, November 27th. Number three, calls for petitioner. We have more petitioners on the agenda. Takes us to number four, the Chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At 6:45, we had a study session concerning our quarterly investment report from our Treasurer, Stacy Page. And at this time, Madam Clerk, I want to recognize Councilman Wiesworth.
Thank you, Mr. Barden. I've got two resolutions I'd like to do. The first one is a memorial resolution for Willie Hester, if somebody will support that.
Support.
Willie passed away this past week. He worked in the DPW for, I'm sure, in excess of probably 40 years. I've known Willie for over 50 years. He was a father, a husband. He was a grandfather. He was a good person and he'll be missed. I got to tell a story about Willie. Back in 1983, the first time that I ran for council, he worked with me and he got me elected. He was one of the ones that did. Then the following term in 1985, he told me, "Are you going to run again?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "Well, you need some big signs." And I said, "Well, where do you get big signs?" He said, "Just give me a week." So he called me about a week later at his house and he had this six four-by-eight blue signs that everybody has seen over the course of a year. And there's only two of them still left. And he wouldn't let me pay for it. And on top of that, he went around town with me, putting up every one of them signs. And he did it in the following years. And he was a good friend of mine and he'll definitely be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Also, a comment. I worked with Willie down at the DPW for over 20 years and he's part of that old guard. Those guys that cared about the residents, cared about the city. Good guy, great guy, quality guy. You could always go to him about the location of a water main or something, infrastructure that's on ground. And these guys knew. And that's something Roberto and I were talking about today, how you were missing those guys and it changes the guard. Those people have been around in that wealth of institutional knowledge. So definitely a good person and he will be missed. And thank you to Willie for all the years of service to this community. And like I said, he was one of our guys that cared about the city, cared about the residents and did the best he could all the time. So rest in peace, Willie.
Thank you. Any comments from council? If you know of a council, a memorial resolution by Mr. Wiesworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe. Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
And if I could, I have a second resolution. This one's a little more upscale. It's retirement resolution for Darren Shelby. Somebody who's supported, I'll expand on it. Darren retired about a month ago after, I believe, he served 28 years. I remember him when he first came in his department and Darren was a true professional from the word go. And he's a piece of our police department. It's very, I'm very sad that he retired, but I wish him luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Just a quick comment on that, too. Yeah, what a hit to the administration. You can't replace a guy like Darren Shelby. Served his community for years. Character and integrity, checked all the boxes. Unfortunately, the way the retirement is structured, he had to move on to a different opportunity. We will be missed. We tried the best we could to keep him here. We know what an important part to this community he was. So he did a lot of great work with the Orders Department, Police Department, whatever we needed Darren to do, he took care of. So definitely will be missed.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. It's been motioned by Mr. Wiesworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe for a retirement resolution. Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved. That concludes the Chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the Chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the Mayor's report.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Madam Treasurer, Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk, audience at home and audience here tonight. Before I get into my report, can I draw your attention to the monitor where we have Jerry Frayer, our DDA Director, with a quick update.
Hi, this is Jerry Frayer, City of Romulus, DDA. And would just like you guys to know that coming up on December 16th at 12 o'clock, which is a Saturday, at our Romulus Memorial Cemetery, we are doing the Remember I or Teach Race Across America at the Romulus Memorial Cemetery. And this is for the Romulus Veterans Outreach Committee and Romulus VFW Post 9568 will be present. So we'd like you guys to come out and join us Saturday, December 16th at 12 o'clock, Romulus Memorial Cemetery, 10101 Ship Road, Romulus, Michigan, 48174. Look forward to seeing you on Saturday, December 16th, Race Across America. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. That's a great program. Proud of the commitment this city's made to the Race Across America in honoring our veterans. So hopefully we'll save everybody out on December 16th for a great event. Couple items, just for housecleaning, I'd like to have a couple of my directors come up and give status reports on some things we have going in the city. So first, I have Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, come up.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to first start off real quick with an introduction. We have Don Straub here, our new Assistant Director at DPW. Don has an extensive history with municipalities. Actually, the last position he held, he had probably about 600 square miles of territory with meter district in Ohio. So he's excellent position. We're very encouraged to have him here and very fortunate with his talents. I'll start off with another update, a couple other projects that we had in the city. A couple of issues we've been seeing with water main breaks in the city. I know there's a lot of the public that have been asking questions of what's happening. But the first project I'd like to talk about is the Wayne E-Force. I know that's a big project, a big intersection that's shut down. It has been shut down basically all summer and all year. I did a little tour on Friday of the status of paving. It's about 30% paved out. Today and also early last week, I sent a couple emails and corresponded with the project manager with Wayne County M.D. and also engineer D.L.Z. on that project. And they had given a paving report that showed that the rest of the project was going to be paved out yet this year. Now, we did have a couple implement dates of weather. Last week, they were supposed to pave another 50% of that road. That didn't happen with the rain event that we did this evening. So I'm waiting to hear back on what their catch-up is. I know the rest of the weather for this week is supposed to be a little bit more conducive to paving. When I was out there on Friday, I did notice that although only 30% was paved, they had prepared the subgrade and formed up probably another 60% of the road. So if I'm keeping in track with how they indicated that it was only a small part of E-force that wouldn't be paved for the weekend or for the year, that's still looking like they're holding true to that. But obviously, Mother Nature is the overall keeper of the schedule with the weather. The other thing I'd like to kind of mention is I know that a lot of our residents have been seeing a number of water main breaks. I have to give a shout out to our DPW crews. They have been working 12 o'clock, morning, night, wee hours of the evening and midnight on water main breaks all throughout the city. And I want to provide some insight as to why that's happening and why we have so many breaks so early in the year. And as you recall, we had that Whitfield pump station connection that happened as part of the Whitfield parallel line that GLWA was installing in the city. Well, roughly late October, they put the pump station offline so they could make that connection. And all along, they've been telling us that connection would take about a month and a half to make. And what they have been doing is backfeeding us through Gibson Land. And what we've been seeing is some pressure spikes. So I had meaning, you know, we've been in touch with GLWA and their technicians regarding why have we been getting these pressure spikes? What they've been causing, some water hammers through the system which are causing these breaks. Now, they're going to expedite the closure and connection of that pump station work. However, they haven't gotten the cycling down correctly on us being backfed through Gibson Land. And that's basically the nature of the root cause of why we're seeing all these water main breaks. So with that, I'll open it up. If there's any questions about any of those two projects or if anybody would like to ask down a question or two about this experience.
Any question from council? No question from council? Mr. Wiesworth?
I have one question. When there is a water main break, how do we find out when we see water coming up from? There's no computer telling us any of that, is there?
No, actually, there is. So we monitor a system from GLWA, GLWA, all of them, okay? And sometimes we get precious spikes, okay? Sometimes I'm alerted by phone and there's another software I use called H2O Measures that's constantly running in the background with my office. That'll give me updates when we see a precious spike beyond what our typical diurnal usage is or consumption. So typically, we're doing about 5 million gallons per day during the season. When we go to seven or eight, I know something's happening. And then I can mobilize crews and we start to look for it. Or a lot of times, we actually do rely on the public to notify us that they see water leaking. And they make those calls into dispatch. Dispatch will contact our non-call foreman and the commission command is no problem there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to bring up our Building Director, Director of Building and Planning, Jeff Kemp.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come in and give a update on the downtown sports development. Last week, I was in communication with Mr. Bartolo and they came in and they paid for the site memory fee for their upcoming site plans that we're anticipating to get and hoping to stay on the side line. Come up with a couple months ago, I think it was. I had the whole, not all, and receipts and everything printed out, but I left them on my desk and I have a little technical note in everybody. So I'll say I wanted to hear if you guys have any questions for me?
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Jeff, and thank the administration for the update and looking forward to looking forward. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. And another reason I wanted to make sure that Roberto came up and gave City Council some backstory on these water main breaks because we're seeing them more and more. Typically, it's spring thaw when we see this. This is out of character, so we've been drilling down to see what's going on. We had three main breaks Saturday alone. Sorry, our crew's out. And not only is Roberto watching that water flow very heavily, he's also tracking dollar amounts spent because there might be an opportunity to go out to somebody for the losses. We heard two hotels went into fire alarms because of spikes. So this is a big issue that we're trying to track down and find out what's going on here. And also, if we are contracted to receive a service, we want to make sure that service is coming in an uninterrupted fashion. So we're going to continue to watch that. So those are the updates on those projects going on. So that being said, I'll get into the action items on our report tonight. The first is DDA Board reappointments. I'm hereby requesting approval to reappoint the following to the Downtown Development Authority. Keith Johnson with a term to expire July 31st, 2027. Craig Greca with a term to expire August 26th, 2027. And Arianna LaShure with a term to expire August 26th, 2027.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion for the DDA Board reappointments for Keith Johnston, Craig Greca, Adriana LaShure, as stated in our memos here.
Support.
We have three motions. The first motion is for Keith Johnston. Then we have two more motions after that. So we're doing the first motion first. Okay, and the first motion was for Roscoe. I made the motion, it was taken by Mr. Wiesworth. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
She stepped out for a moment.
Oh, okay. Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that second motion to reappoint Craig Greca, term to expire August 26th, 2027.
Need a second.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wiesworth, to concur with the administration and approve the reappointment of Craig Erson to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire on August 26th, 2027. In discussion? Hear no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh oh. Okay. Chair votes yes, motion approved.
And Mr. Chair, I'll make that third motion for Adriana LaShure to reappoint to the Downtown Development Authority, term to expire on August 26th, 2027.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, to concur with the administration and approve the reappointment of Arianna LaShure to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire on August 26th, 2027. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wiesworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank all those residents, too, for their donation of their time to participate on the DDA. Next item I have is a Gem Services Agreement for HVAC. I concur with the recommendation of Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, and Legal Counsel to respectfully request City Council to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached contract with Gem Industrial Incorporated for 463 hours of preventive maintenance for filters and belts for all city facilities, including the Romulus Athletic Center under separate contract. 96 hours of troubleshooting, software, hardware needed as required and $2,500 material allowance to address nuisance repairs to eliminate callback charges at a total price of $96,100. Maria Ferris, Finance Director, has verified these funds for this acquisition have been budgeted for and are available in the accounts 101265932000 and 101441932000 and 101430932000, also 101752932000 and 205301932000, as well as 205336932000 and 271790932000.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached contract with Gem Industrial, Inc. for 463 hours of preventive maintenance for filters and belts for all city facilities, including the rack, under separate contract. $96 hours of troubleshooting, software, hardware needs as required and $2,500 material allowance to address nuisance repairs to eliminate callback charges at a total price of $96,100.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wiesworth, for GM Services Agreement for HVAC. No discussion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
How do we come up with these hours? Like 463 hours, 96 hours? How do we come up with those hours? And if we don't use all those hours, what happens? I thought I saw something about it rolling over, but do we get the money kicked back to us or what happens? What's the process?
Really good question. So historically, when the city was with Honeywell, we had a block hours of like 550 hours of what it takes to go through each of these facilities and change out the filters and belts. Gem, we had worked out a proposal to be somewhere near there, okay? That's how we came up with the 463 hours. But what was kind of hurting us with our last contract, with our last vendor, was the fact that there was no troubleshooting time, okay? Or what we had interpreted and what we had agreed to with their management certainly wasn't being carried out out in the field. So what we've worked out with Gem is that we would have 463 hours of what they think would be our PM time and 96 hours of troubleshooting. If at the end of the year, when I look at the reports and we're at, let's just, I'm going to throw out a number, 300 hours, well, we're going to bankroll into the future those hours that would be subtracted out of the next year. So it's going to come down to a lot of accounting and, you know, basically review and reporting on both ends, our end and on theirs. And that's something that we haven't been able to do with our last vendor. So we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to be somewhere around 400, 450 hours for the PM work and 96 hours of troubleshooting and that little allotment of the $2,500. If there's a fuse or a breaker or something small that needs to happen in one of the rooftop units, they'll do that and it's not an extra charge. It's included in that overall allotment monthly.
So they're not nickel and diamond?
No.
Okay. And so you said, so if there's any rollover, you'll subtract it from next year's?
Yes.
Bank, whatever that is. Okay. And then, and I thought I also read that this is also a savings from what we had before from?
Absolutely.
It is a big, is it a nice saving?
Their first year is at $96,100.
Okay.
We spent with Campbell over 120 in one year.
Got it, okay.
So we definitely have, the name of the game is we're trying to control costs.
Right.
These units, just like your house, everything's unpredictable when something might break down. We're trying to control our costs as best we can and we feel that we've got a product here that's similar of what we left with Honeywell and I think they understand what our needs are a little bit better than our last vendor.
Thanks, Roberto. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes. I was looking on page one of this particular document. It says that Kembo Mechanical, they voluntarily denied. Was it something that they wasn't doing?
So we're the public forum, I guess I'm?
Yeah.
It was?
We can brief Council on that later on. There might be some things, you know, let's just say we've decided to discontinue that relationship.
Okay, because it's saying that they denied service to the city and that's why I was kind of like?
They have, that is the first statement.
Okay. Okay, so I was just concerned about that statement in there, so if they owe us anything, make sure, you know, because you shouldn't leave a city like that, you know, just up and down because you choose to deny it. So if it's anything that's owed to us, make sure you get it. I know you will. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Thank you, but I'm going to wait until they brief council. Thank you.
Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Roswell, for Gem Services Agreement for HVAC. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. The next item I have up is a continuance of last item, or last week's budget amendment we did for the five-ton truck for the DPW. Concur with the recommendation of Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, and Gary Harris, Purchasing Director, and respectfully request council's authorization to piggyback on the Rochester Hills Cooperative Contract RFP RH-20-023 for the purchase of one 2023 M2-106 Plus Conventional Freightliner chassis from Wolverine Freightliner with extended warranty for total cost of $109,457. Additionally, I concur with the recommendation of Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, and Gary Harris, request to piggyback on my deal contract number 071B7700086 for the purchase of the Chris Steel 14-foot Select Dump Body and upfitting of the chassis for the Truck and Trailer Specialties Incorporated for a total cost of $59,785. Maria Ferris, Finance Director, has verified these funds. The two purchases are currently available Motor Vehicle Fund, Capital Outlay Machinery and Equipment expense in account number 661-258-960138.
Need a motion?
To the chair?
Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make the motion to concur with the administration and consent to piggyback on the Rochester Hills Cooperative Contact RFP RH-20-023 for the purchase of one 2023 M2-106 Plus Conventional Freightliner Chassis from Wolverine Freightliner with extended warranty for a total cost of $109,457.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to concur with the administration and consent to piggyback on the Rochester Hills Cooperative Contract. Any discussion? Ms. Williams?
I'm looking at, through the chair, to the mayor. It says additional, to concur with the recommendations of Roberto. Is this additional truck or is this just a part?
It's upfitting the truck. So the initial purchase is for the chassis of the truck, and the second motion is reported for the upfitting of the truck. You know, they come bare, and then we upfit them for specific use. That'll be the dump bed and the supporting equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
To the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Next motion to concur with the administration and consent to piggyback on M deal contract number 071B7700086 for the purchase of the Chris Steel 14-inch Select Dump Body and upfitting the chassis from Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc. for a total cost of $59,785.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Mr. Roswell, to concur with the administration and consent to piggyback on the M deal contract 071B7700086 for the purchase of the Chris Steel 14 Select Dump Body and unfitting chassis, the chassis from Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc. for a total of $59,785. Any discussion from council? Hear no discussion from council, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, mayor.
Number six is the clerk's report. Three action items under my report. Under 6A, it is requested that council approve the second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 2324-9 in the amount of $22,606 for additional funding needed for two part-time staff members for the Recreation Department through the fiscal year '24. This budget amendment was introduced at the November 27 regular meeting.
To the chair?
Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion to approve the second reading and final adoption of the Budget Amendment 23-24, 24, 3 slash 24-9 in the amount of $22,606 for additional funding needed for two part-time staff members for the Recreation Department through fiscal year '24. This budget amendment was introduced at the November 27 regular meeting.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 23/24-9. Any discussion? Hear no discussion from council, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
abstain.
Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. 6B, it is requested that council approve the second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 2324-10 in the amount of $19,200 for additional funding needed for one part-time IT staff member through fiscal year '24. This budget amendment was introduced at the November 27 regular meeting.
To the chair?
Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion for the second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 23/24-10 in the amount of $19,200 for additional funding needed for one part-time IT staff member through fiscal year '24. This budget amendment was introduced at the November 27 regular meeting.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe, second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 23/24-10. Any discussion from council? Hear no discussion from council, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Abstain.
Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
The last action item under the clerk's report, this is a reappointment to the Romulus Board of Review. It is requested that council concur with the recommendation of the Executive Advisory Committee and reappoint Reverend Edward Thomas Jr. to the Romulus Board of Review with a term commencing on January 1, 2024 and expiring on December 31, 2025.
Chairman, I'm going to move that we reappoint Reverend Edward Thomas Jr. to the Board of Review.
Support.
The motion by Mr. Roswell, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for reappointment to the Romulus Board of Review. Any discussion? Hear no discussion from council? Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion approved.
Thank you, council. That concludes the clerk's report. It takes us to number seven, the treasurer's report.
Good evening and thank you, council, mayor, chief of staff, clerk, deputy clerk, and listening audience. I'd like to remind everyone that the winter tax bills were mailed out and you should have received them. If you did not, please contact the treasurer's office. They are due February 14, 2024. And as a reminder, unpaid summer and winter taxes that are not paid are turned over to Wayne County March 1, 2024. And as always, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call my office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the agenda for those who are in the audience. The rules to address city council can be found on the back of the agenda. If you would like to address city council, please raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by the chairperson, approach the podium and state your name. Please note that members of the public who submitted a public comment card will be called upon first. You will have three minutes to speak, and any additional time will be upon the consent of the chairperson. Mr. Chair, we do not have any written requests this time.
Any comments from the audience? If there's no comments from the audience, Madam Clerk, we'll close that part out.
Number nine is unfinished business. Number 10, new business. Number 11, communication.
To the chair?
Ms. Tally?
Okay, just a couple quick things. I had a little friend posted on my porch this last week. It was a little puppy, just posted on my porch, and it was so cute. He was starving, hungry. If somebody's missing a dog, little golden puppy dog, the first person I called, of course, was Mr. Roswell. He got directed to Animal Control, who came out, took care of this little puppy. He was so cute. I wish I could have kept him for myself, but I ain't got time to take care of a dog. I'm sorry, Mr. Roswell. But they came out, took care of him, and picked him up, took him to the animal shelter. So I'm not sure of the whole process of the timeline, but he was taken to the animal shelter. If somebody is missing a dog, a little golden dog, very cute, and he was a puppy, so just wanted to throw that out there. And then my next thing, we did a lot of shout-outs last week for our Winter Wonderland last week with the holiday training was really great. I just want to shout out one person who gets very little attention when we, these events with DDA, and I just want to shout out to Michael Skaska. He does a great job. He's in the background. He's an unsung hero in my eyes. He did the tree lighting up behind the scenes. He does our newsletter, the Santa branch I think he did over the weekend. He is just behind the scenes, don't look for no attention, and he just does his deal. So thank you, Michael Skaska. He was in here working in our council chambers, trying to get everything up to speed, and just thanks for what he does. He gets, doesn't get a lot of recognition, but I want to give, just say thank you for all that you do behind the scenes. And Roger too. Thank you, guys, appreciate you. And then lastly, I would just like to send my condolences to Councilwoman Williams' family and your laws, and I'm praying for you and your family.
Thank you.
John, just a?
Mr. Roswell?
You know, I went the, I went the next day to the animal shelter, and I talked with that dog, and he was very disappointed that Mrs. Tally didn't take a minute.
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to inform everyone that we will be at the high school tomorrow from 10 to 12 with Forgotten Harvest. And also, on December the 19th, we're working on it now, and more information is coming forth. It's only for Romulus residents, but we will be giving away turkeys and the complete meal for the residents of Romulus only. So to spread the word, it will be during the Forgotten Harvest distribution, December the 19th. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Abdo? Mr. Roswell? Tina? Ah, mayor?
I'm a sheriff. Oh, boy.
No further questions.
Sorry, who's that for?
No further questions.
Should be called Blue.
Okay, if there are no further communication, takes us to number 12, adjournment.
Hold on.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Roswell, supported by Ms. Tally, for adjournment. Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Mr. Roswell?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.